All right. I would like to call the May 22nd, 2023 Hilliard City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Carrier.
Here.
Ms. Cottone.
I'm here.
Ms. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Marsh.
Here.
Mr. Teeter's excused, Vice President Vermillion.
Here.
President Tarazi.
Here.
All right. Council has copies of the March 27th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing and seeing none, those minutes stand approved. There's one item of business this evening, which is charter review discussions. I was going to start this off by throwing out a few ideas that I had for the charter, if everybody's okay with that, and then we'll proceed, see where the conversation goes and how much interest there is to keep talking. One matter that has come up in the past, if you recall, and before we get into the ones on the screen, sometime, I think, last year or something, I'd proposed that we do virtual, allow the charter to allow virtual attendance of a council member when a council member's not available. Not reopening that whole discussion, but I did notice, as I was going through things, that Reynoldsburg just passed a charter change to allow virtual or electronic meetings specifically for special or emergency meetings to be held virtually or electronically in the discretion of the president of council or chair of any board or commission if the meeting is broadcast live in a manner generally accessible by the public. So that's what they did. And I think that this is worth considering because there's been so many times where I've seen, you know, something has come up in the news, something has come up, whatever, city manager sent out an email and council would like to discuss it, and rather sort of a lot of emails going back and forth that if they're just, okay, let's have a Zoom meeting in, you know, later today or whatever, if it's sort of a special emergency. So I think that's worth considering. Is there anybody who would like to opine on that particular one, since it was just approved by Reynoldsburg? Yes, no? Do you have any thoughts on it?
I don't think it's a bad thing.
Okay. I think it's worth considering. So I'll add that into then to the pile of the other ones to consider. The next one, as just as a general background, as it relates to the directors of finance and law. So just as background, since we all don't have multiple charters memorized, our current charter calls for the director of law and the director of finance to both be approved by the city manager and work at the discretion of the city manager. In Dublin, so what's up on the screen, the director of law and finance shall be appointed and removed by the city manager, subject to the consent and approval of council. The director of law and the director of finance shall serve at the pleasure of the city manager and council. So then it's sort of both are overseeing specifically those two positions. In Upper Arlington, the city attorney shall be appointed and serve at the pleasure of council, so they don't have the city manager appointing the attorney. It's actually council that does, and I believe that's how your former city, correct?
Former city, yes.
Your former city, it was the council that did that. And then the also, let me see here, under Upper Arlington, a finance department's going to, the finance director shall serve at the pleasure of the city manager, but may be removed at the recommendation of city manager upon approval of such recommendation, but at least five council members. So again, that there's levels of protection for both the financial director and the law director, different than every other director. They're treating them differently, and that's for a reason. And then if you look at the Columbus charter, which I added today, they actually have an elected city attorney of four years, as well as an elected auditor, and that's exactly the same as the city of Lima, Ohio. They have both a city auditor and a city law director that are both independently elected. So again, this idea that those two positions need separated to some degree from both council and the administration, so that there's independence. So you don't have a scenario, for example, where there's pressure by one side or the other to give you either unbiased or biased legal advice or biased financial advice, either way. And I think all of those are valid and worthwhile improvements that we could do to our charter. I personally would prefer an independent law director and the finance director to be terminatable upon approval of council, but I'm open to discussion to see if the council is open to any of these changes to be, to make us more consistent with sort of the surrounding jurisdictions and how those things are handled. So I just wanted to kind of kick it off, see if there's anybody else have any thoughts or comments on that.
Anybody? I'm ready.
All right, go ahead.
I guess if the goal is to create an independent law director, then I would prefer it be an elected position, period, and then that that person then answers to the public every so many years. So I think Lima does that, right?
And Columbus.
In Columbus.
And many others. Just to pick those to show that how they.
On this list that you have here, yeah. So just for me, I think, you know, the people having a say and the people having the ability to do that, I don't know where you can go wrong. I'll tell you, though, my thought to this whole approach, I wanted to make sure that we add Mr. Teeter's email to the record as well. He had provided an email of what his opinion was on this matter to all of us earlier, and I think that needs to be added. So if I could ask the clerk to do that, that would be great. And I took what he said, and I understand what he's saying, that doing these things without a charter commission can be problematic, but this is a cut and dry. This isn't, we're doing this, we're doing that. What we've run into and what we continue to run into is disagreements around communication and around, around some of the things that are happening. And I think this might be one way where we can solve some of those disagreements. And I think it's, the other thing I would say to everyone is, I wasn't a fan of electric aggregation, but when it was brought before this body, there was no way I wasn't going to bring it before the public for a decision. If the community wants electrical aggregation, the community can vote on it. So I don't see that as being any different than anything else that we're doing in bringing this law director issue to the front and bringing it to the community. I think you get into a real dangerous situation when you decide or make the decision that, no, the community doesn't need to have a say on a change in governance. So nobody's perfect. We drafted up the city charter, charter review commission approved it, we've run into some kinks. It's not impossible for us to say, hey, think about this change, and then let the community decide. So I'm for having the community to take a look and the community to have a say. I think it would be very problematic to not let the community chime in and say, hey, this makes sense or this doesn't make sense. And in that regard, I had a lot of questions that came up about the position itself, because it's kind of tucked in the budget, and I pulled some budget items.
I can pause you before you go into that. I want to clarify one thing, because I know the clerk had asked me about this as well, or, and maybe this was assumed or something by other council members, just to get this out of the way. The goal, if you have an elected person, it could go the other way or whatnot, but let's say it's an elected person, that doesn't mean that that person can not turn around and hire Frost Brown Todd to do most of the work, or to hire some other big firm to do most of the work. It's just a question of that when a push comes to shove, that person is an attorney, they would be an elected person in the city of Hilliard, and then their responsibility is to be that independent conscience and voice to tell the city manager where, when she's gone out of line, and tell council when we've gone out of line, and neither council nor the city manager can do anything about it, because they're independently elected. So to me, that makes a lot of sense regardless of whether anybody here is still in the same room down the road, years in the future, whatnot, and obviously other cities do it. I didn't see any city do it the way we do it here. I mean, maybe there are, I haven't seen it, but to me, this is about structural improvement that maybe we have everybody here still in the same room ultimately, doesn't matter. It's just that whether you have an independent law director, it's independently elected, there's no question that they're independent at that point, and they're, you know, and then thereby they can hire any outside council they want for specialized skill set, I.e. bond counsel or specialized skills that may be needed. So that's kind of the thinking behind that, because one of the questions Dee asked was, well, what if you get somebody elected that doesn't know municipal governance? Well, that's not a huge deal, for one thing. I don't know if most people know this, but most of the, a lot of the judges that get elected downtown initially don't have any experience as judges also. They just, you know, we've had a number of people get elected, they learn on their job, at least in that particular expense situation, they're learning directly on the job. Here, they would be learning that they could hire outside bond, outside council, anybody they want to be, if this is the method that's approved. So anyway, I wanted to just throw that in there.
Well, thank you, President Tarazi. That brings up a good point. Is, do you envision this law director role as it's elected as being a part-time position or a full-time position?
Well, I think that it would, the, that gets into the scope of, because the way it's done in other cities is they set it, the council sets it and says, okay, we're going to have this salary for the law director.
And that would be consumer with whether one is full-time or?
Exactly.
Director Hartman, are you full-time, considered full-time for Hilliard or part-time?
Would be considered an independent contractor.
Okay, so you, you, you work for Hilliard and do what's required under your contract, and we just got a copy of that. Do you also work for other municipalities and other, and do other things?
Yes.
Okay. And when, and that brought up another, I looked at the budget, and that's where I was headed earlier. We spend about $600,000 a year or so in legal expenses. Is it more, Michelle? You're shaking your head at me. Keep me straight.
We have two staff attorneys that we have on staff that's part of that.
Prosecutor and Ms. Clodfeller, who's awesome.
Right. I don't have the budget in front of me, but I'd have to look at that to see what those numbers are.
Okay. And, and right now, Frost Brown Todd, I'm going to make sure I get the firm right, you hire them to do stuff like our collective bargaining and other specialized services now? Is that true, Mr. Hartman or Ms. Crandall, whoever you want to, whoever from staff wants to answer, I don't care.
I'm sorry. It's the question before me.
I'm sorry.
Look, I didn't understand what you're saying.
You're ignoring me.
No, I'm not.
Just kidding you. What I was wondering is, when you hire special folks, like I've seen you hire for collective bargaining, we hire someone in your firm to do that, right?
Correct.
Okay. When we hire them and pay them, do you also get paid when we pay them?
I don't, I get paid, I'm a partner, so I don't get paid, basically.
You get, oh.
I don't get a portion of anything.
Okay. So there's no, you don't get a fee or anything on top of what you get from your contract for us?
No.
Okay. And, and, all right. And the last question I have, as I was putting this all together, I noticed in your contract you make $20,000 a month for services for Hilliard. Do you remember, do you have an idea what you started at, when you started with Hilliard, per month?
Just, I know it's not $500, but it's 19.5. It's not 20.
I'm sorry. Okay, 19.5.
And, yeah, when we started, I think.
You started under the mayor, I remember.
Right, right. And originally, the mayor had bids from me and I believe Lane Alton. Lane Alton was like at $25,000 a month.
Right.
Those were you get, the guys you had hired. And then I think we came in at 20 and then ended up, he kept whittling down what we would actually have to do.
Now, that doesn't surprise me.
Yeah. I mean, so he said, you're basically coming to meetings, like, well, you get dragged into a little more, but I believe it was 13.5.
Okay. And you've been law director for how many years?
Since, gosh, what is it, 18?
They all go.
Was it, I know, was it 18, I think? Or 19? One of the.
We can figure that out.
It was pre-COVID.
Okay.
Tell you that.
All right. Thank you. That's kind of what I wanted to understand.
Okay. So from, from this, just so it's clear, is there's a current org chart. We have the city manager appointing the law director, independent, but at the pleasure of the city manager, operating currently. And then addition to that, we have legal staff, and it's still, it's never made sense to me as to exactly how the legal relationship is in terms of responsibility between the two. I know it's been explained, I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong, but to me, it's just so much cleaner if you have one person that's the elected person, or one person that's appointed by council, or whatever, any of these options, and then all legal people directly report to that person. And I think that that's just a cleaner way that other cities do it, and, you know, this has always been something that would, I think, is in room for improvement. So Pete, what are your thoughts?
I have lots of thoughts, but to that particular point, I believe, as we kind of discussed it back, the first time that Phil's firm was selected was, you're, you're getting the benefit of the entire firm, basically, at a monthly rate, which we are clearly not going to hire four, five, six, seven, 10 staff attorneys, in that from a budgeting standpoint, it made sense to use the expertise of his firm as needed. Sometimes Phil works on things, sometimes other folks in his office do, and that's, that's why we thought that made financial sense. Back to the, the base premise, I guess I would challenge the base premise that our law director is not independent. This was a specific question that back in April of 2018, when we met, one of the specific questions was, who does the law director work for? Does he work for the city manager, or does he work for city council? And the person who answered that was Mr. Carrier, who said, the law director works for the city. And that shut the group up, because that was right. That's how, who the law director works for. Now, that means sometimes Phil gives advice that Michelle doesn't like, sometimes he gives advice that I don't like, sometimes he gives advice you don't like, sometimes he gives advice that the audience doesn't like.
Nobody likes him.
But, but that's what he's supposed to do in that role. My concern is, first of all, I don't think we have a problem, but if we did have a problem, I can't think of a single time in my life that I said, you know what that problem needs? It needs a politician. That'll fix it. I think we've seen how that works. I don't think there's a whole lot of Republicans who would say that Franklin County prosecutor is doing the best job, or Columbus city attorney. I don't think there's very many Democrats who would say the state attorney general is doing a great job. When you make it an elected position, you introduce politics, and that's all there is to it. You can't get around it. That person is inevitably part of that. That brings me to another reason why I don't think an elected person is the right person for this. I went back, Tom Baker had done a really cool five-point thing on why he believed it was important for the city to move from an elected administrative leader to a professional He had five points, and tweaking the first two to fit the law director role, he would say, can we consistently find a law director who, one, has experience in municipal law, two, has experience in city charters, state law, and local government and their interactions, three, has the personnel management expertise to direct a staff that includes in-house attorneys, diversion program staff, and potential outsourced law firms, four, given that the person meets these criteria, is the person, A, in the right time of their life, from a business employment standpoint, to leave behind a practice to take this role, and B, in the right time of their life, from a family time commitment standpoint, to run a campaign for election and potentially take on the responsibilities of law director, and five, given they meet everything else above, can they get elected to the position? I reached the same conclusion on this as we did when we decided to move to a city manager, that the marketplace in central Ohio in particular is far too competitive to risk the reputation of the city of Hilliard on an elected politician being the law director. So that's why I just cannot support that concept at all. And I did want to also address, I knew it would come up, because it does sometimes, the argument of to just put it on the ballot and let the people decide. And certainly, there's a school of thought of elected representatives that were simply tribunes of the people, and the right way to represent is stick your finger in the air and find out which way the wind's blowing. You see that all over the place, sometimes all the time, sometimes selectively. I've said this before in emails, I do not subscribe to that philosophy. The philosophy that I subscribe to as an elective representative is the same one of Edmund Burke, who was an 18th century political philosopher, statesman in, in Britain. I've said, our responsibility is to provide our best judgment. His, his full quote is, your representative owes you, not his industry only, but his judgment, and he betrays, instead of serving you, if he sacrifices it to your opinion. If I believe in the idea as, as dangerous and bad as I frankly think this one is, I have a responsibility, it would be a betrayal of my oath of office, to put this in front of the people. So I think it's our duty to use our faculties, make the best decisions we can. People can come up with different, different opinions on that, but for those reasons, I am not supportive of putting this, of moving this proposal for an elected law director any further than, than this room right now.
Can I engage with you on a couple of the points you made?
Sure.
So, because I'm open to any of the three, Dublin, Upper Arlington, or Columbus. To me, they're all an improvement on where we are now. Upper Arlington, they, as, I'm not going to reread these. Are you open to supporting either the Dublin or the Upper Arlington, or some combination Or is it that you don't want any change at all?
No, because that goes back to, so the question before the law director question was about council approval of specific, I think we talked about three different offices, law director, finance, and public service, was part of the conversation we had back five years ago. We had a, a pretty robust debate on that. At the time, it was Mr. Teeter who thought that, you know, maybe council should approve certain ones, but ultimately, we decided as a body, and I still think this is best, that if we're going to hold the city manager to the high standards of, and responsibilities and high expectations that we do, it's only, it only makes logical sense to allow the city manager to put together that team that he or she would feel like is best to, to deliver on those expectations. If we start hamstringing things or introducing our own politics into those decisions, then we are potentially causing detriment to the city. So I really do think what we settled on was the best course of action, and I haven't seen anything to date that gives me any reason to think otherwise.
Well, why do you think that both Dublin and Upper Arlington specifically, and all the, most, all of them specifically call out the director of law and the director of finance for special treatment?
I don't know. I can't answer that.
Everybody is wrong in all of this, they all, and Hilliard's found the right, here's where the, the pushback is, and I don't want to personalize it, because then it gets personalized. Let's, in an abstract world, city council is dependent on the financial information that we get from staff, the finance director, and the legal, you know, advice we get from the law director, and the advice we get from the city manager. Those are the three points. And if those two points, their jobs can be terminated at any moment, at the pleasure of the city manager, if there's ever any kind of conflict, and they know what the city manager wants versus what council wants, there's a detriment, there's a, there's a imbalance in the system, hence why they put this, so that the finance director feels like, well, even if I say something that, like, for example, again, I'm not talking about specific people, whatever, let's, you know, when we're talking charter, we have to think 50 years down the road. Why does Dublin have this? Well, so that if the finance director thinks, things are going in the wrong direction, and their, the city manager doesn't want that out, it'll affect their job or whatever, the finance director knows they cannot be fired by just the city manager acting alone on a whim, or on a moment's notice, that they would have to also get five votes of council, so there's a balance there, where both protect, to make sure that you have truly independent advice from the finance director and the law director. I think structurally, that makes a lot of sense, hence why it's done that way.
I think that's certainly a reason that it could be, but it's not necessarily the reason. It could simply just have been that the seven members of Dublin City Council at that time wanted power and authority of their own. I don't know. I wasn't there, and none of us were. But it certainly does put, put, put some, you know, it, it introduces politics into some of the decision-making, particularly the hiring process. If, whether it's our city manager or Dublin's, has a great candidate that they like, but for whatever, whatever the political issue may be, that there's four council members who, nothing to do with that person's performance as a finance director or their, their financial mind, just decides, well, we don't want that kind of person to be the finance director. I don't even want, I don't think that should even be an option, because now you're hamstringing, again, your city manager, who ultimately is the one you can still hold responsible, and we can still hold responsible. If there's a, a pattern of firings, or a pattern of false information, those are things that, that go, you know, the buck stops at the city manager, and we still have recourse to address those, if those ever happened. I haven't seen that even come close to happening, so to me, this is kind of a, a solution in search of a problem.
Well, I don't want to get into a contentious debate, because I feel there has been problems as it relates to multiple instances where we've been given misleading or incomplete or in, information. I don't want this to degenerate to a specific, because this is not personal, it's something that, again, for the next 50 years, 100 years, it might be this way, and we need to be thinking about that. And I, to me, it does address some things that, that this would fix. If had this been in place, I think a number of meetings, issues, and whatever, would have been handled differently and would have came out differently. But that's, I don't want to get into that level of, of an argument.
One tiny thing on that is that we do have to keep in mind that the city manager doesn't work for any one of us, or any two of us, or any three of us. The city manager works for a majority. And if one person feels like they didn't get some sort of information, you know, have a personal conversation about that, but if the entire body thought it was a problem, it would have been raised by now. And so changing our city charter, just because one or two or even three members at any particular time aren't happy with a particular thing, doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. So basically, your position is clear. You think Dublin, Upper Arlington, Columbus, and all the rest that do it that way are all, you think this is better, what we have here, and want to keep it as is, and don't want any questions given to the voters? That summarizes your position?
That's correct, yes, I think.
Okay. Do you, Cynthia, do you feel the same? Go ahead.
I'd like to address some comments that have previously been made.
Go ahead.
First of all, the question of the electric aggregation, which keeps popping up in every meeting. It, it's a very different situation from the proposed charter changes. First of all, in our charter itself, section 12.07, it actually talks about a charter review commission, and I believe it's there for a reason, because we do want that community input. That is a mechanism for community input, is to have a charter commission. And I think, in order to do this correctly, that is the way that we need to go. It was referenced that there's some kinks in our, in our charter, and I think that is largely, sometimes, our personal perceptions. Some of you perceive that there are major problems with the charter, but as Mr. Marsh just mentioned, I think most of us believe that, that there are no major problems. There might be some things that we could look at, but again, I think the proper forum is to go through a charter commission to do that. is to go through a charter commission to do that. It was brought out that if, if we're, if we don't support this effort, that we somehow don't want the community to have a say, or to have a voice. But that's not true. Again, I go back to the charter commission, we want the community to have a voice, and to have a thoughtful voice, and, and to discuss it, and, and think about it. I think, didn't the last charter commission meet for like a year? They, they met a long time, discussing the entire charter. And I think that that is the appropriate way to do this, is to really, really look at it and analyze things. This is a huge change that, that you're proposing, and I don't think that doing it this way does our residents any good. And I will just note that the charter commission, which did consist of our residents, they, they were ignored on the question of the form of government, and not that I, I'm not happy with our current form of government, I, I like it. But I'm just saying that you should be careful about throwing out the, the fact that we don't want the community to have a say, when we actually do. Further, I do believe that the last, the council that was in place in 2019 hired an excellent city manager. I'm, I'm happy with her knowledge and capability, and I believe she has what it takes to make those important decisions about our, our legal team, and our finance director, and our finance team. The discussions that took place, well, that have taken place in the last few, few meetings have devolved into very, very political discussions. So I understand where Mr. Marsh is coming from, that, you know, we, we want to make this a body that works for the people of Hilliard, and not just always trying to make everything a political thing. So I believe that proposing these changes has its basis in certain council members feeling personally aggrieved, for whatever reason. Again, I think this needs to be done thoughtfully through a charter commission. Thank you.
Can I respond to some of your concerns?
You are always welcome to.
So, in my view, you're taking one part of the charter and leaving the other part. One part of the charter talks about the charter review commission every 10 years, but if the council was only exclusively to use that for any charter change, then there wouldn't be the other part of this, part of it that calls for citizen-led, you know, petition drive. Any one of us can go collect 950 signatures on any charter change, and send it right to the voters. And it also calls, in the charter, for seven members can choose to send something to the voters for approval, because ultimately, the voters, talking to the voters is the vote. That is what matters. And if your view that, oh, because there's one part of the charter, therefore the other two parts don't exist, they're both equally there. You can do it in any one of those three. If you say, hey, I don't think this should be even talked about for 10 more years until a charter review commission, that's fine, that's an opinion, but that doesn't mean the other two routes don't exist, and that there are also equally valid ways of, of addressing this.
And, and you're right, and, and it is a minimum every 10 years, right? We don't have to wait 10 years. But I just think that these are major changes that need a very, very thoughtful, methodical approach, and that's not what's happened here.
Would you, well, I mean, what we're talking about, Columbus, Upper Arlington, Dublin, like, these are, they're our immediate next-door cities that have it different than ours. We're not talking about we're inventing a new wheel here. But I do want to ask you a question. If we were to vote to impanel a charter review committee of some variety of the public to look at this issue of, would you support that, or you want to wait 10 more years until this issue is looked at?
I'm not even prepared to answer that right now. I'm, I'm just looking at what was handed to me as I sat down, and I found, I found this in front of me. I hadn't looked at it before I sat down here, so.
I'm sorry. Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, Councilman Carr.
Yeah, I got one. I guess the only thing I'd like to say to that councilman, Councilwoman Vermillion is, the ultimate community input is by the community voting. Clear and simple. That's all I got to say.
I also like to say is, this idea that there's anything removed from politics is, I completely disagree with that argument. There's everything, I mean, if you actually know the nitty-gritty of how the city manager changed of government worked, it was all politics. Your presence on council was all politics. Yours is a deciding vote on a lot of it. It was, everything is about, it's all. Now, the question is, you know, this is, you know, we have to still make a best decision as to how to proceed. Anyway, Tina, how do you, or Miss Councilwoman Cottone, do you have an opinion that you'd like to share on this topic?
I don't have, I don't have anything to add that hasn't been stated already in Councilman Teeter's email, and Councilman Marsh's comments today, and Councilman Vermillion's comments. I have nothing to add to that.
Okay. So it sounds like, then, the three of you, or four of you, have already decided that you would not support any charter change at this time, and any council, or any charter review commission?
I haven't talked to them. I mean, if that's what you're suggesting, I'm just saying, they've said everything. I would say there's no reason for me to add to what they've said, or to what I said two weeks ago, so.
Would you support a charter commission to look at this topic?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Any comments?
I guess the next question is, we've got about 10 minutes left. This comes out of committee of the whole, this first reading.
I'm sorry, what?
Turn it off, Dee. I apologize. So this has been now through the committee of the whole. Proceedually, the next step is first reading tonight, or next? Or does it go to Phil? What's next, according to the rules?
So according to the rules, when we changed the legislative procedure last February, there's a few ways that you can do it. So the member requested agenda item, and that's the, the upon written request, that can go to the committee of the whole, received by the clerk, blah, 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 where they explain the request. There will be not a staff report recommendation when the item first appears in the committee of the whole agenda. With a motion, a second, a majority of vote of members present shall take one of the following actions if necessary. One, refer the topic to the next committee of the whole for further discussion, at which time, if requested, a staff report additional information and recommendation may be prepared. Two, request legislation be prepared by the law department for council consideration at the next regular meeting. Or three, decide not to pursue the members initiated item. And that's section four, rule 4.02. And then there's 4.03, which is member discussion legislation from the floor, which is not really where we're at. I can read that for you if you want.
I got it here. So if it doesn't come out of the committee of the whole, we have to bring it in council discussion, get a second to get a first reading via the charter.
Could you explain that in more detail? I'm not sure what you're saying. If you're saying, you have to...
4.03 says, during the council discussion portion without mending the agenda, a member may propose items for discussion, or the support of another member propose legislation. So, so basically, when we do our meeting tonight at 7:00, we put this on, we propose it, we get a second, it goes to use, to form, and content pursuant to the charter sections, I can get them if you want, but they're out there. And then, it comes back for a first reading at our next meeting.
Yeah, based on 4.03.
Okay. That's what I need clarity for.
Yeah, it's probably something that, I'm guessing, might be, want to revisit, because it seems kind of odd to go into council, to go into the council of the whole and vote it down, and then go through it all again. But the way it's written, that's the way it is.
That was a compromise, obviously, because the charter can, rules count over rule of the charter, and the charter provisions provide for two readings upon a second of any member.
I, I don't necessarily, I understand what you're saying, but, yeah, the way it's written now, I've, I've agreed, so.
302, 303 of the charter is basically what I'm referencing. No, I'm just, I'm just making sure I understand how it goes from here.
I get worried when we quote the charter, but, I mean, without everyone looking at it, but, you know, the question, I know when we drafted this, it complied with the charter, so.
Right. Exactly.
Because we debated it, yeah.
We did.
Pretty heavily. So it, you're correct, it could be brought up at the council meeting, if it would go down here.
Okay, well, so then, do we, I think then we just adjourned, we just addressed to get an up or down vote at the regular meeting?
Right, just to breathe through council as a discussion.
Okay. So any other topics for the charter?
So what, we're, we're not going to vote on it now?
Well, we don't have to.
That's correct, but if somebody wanted to make a motion, they could.
And I think it's pretty obvious that we don't, and if, you know, it's 3-3 at the moment, or 4-3-4, whoever what it is, unless you want a motion, we have five minutes, four minutes.
No, I just wanted to understand the process. So if it, if we just quit talking about it, then what happens next? Nothing, or?
Well, potentially, nothing. I, I think that there's things of, in here of merit to such a degree that it's worth my time to look into circulating petitions, and I've already gotten the people volunteers to do that. So if you guys are uninterested in making these improvements, and think that, you know, that's, everybody's got an opinion, and we'll start working on that, and, and whether we form, you know, we'll go from there. So I'm going to, I would like to entertain a motion and second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motioned. Any second? Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This meeting is adjourned.
Three minutes to spare.
All right, take a break.